We're restricted by what we can communicate again to the teachers and they've got their representatives and we have to respect them. If we cross over that line, then they're going to look at that as some kind of unfair waiver charge that we know, you know, over exceeded our authority. So we're handcuffed in a lot of ways and I don't think that that comes from unfortunate to the teachers in terms of not that we want not to communicate, but we'd be in trouble if we were making statements to unrepresented people.
Yeah.
So, no, I know, I'm just, I'm sort of.
That's an important part though, is what Allison was saying is we cannot communicate, okay, once a collective party, once they have a party in the community and they have a, a, a union partner to negotiate for that, we can't reach out to them and say, here's what our brass rules are, here's what we're thinking and so forth. We're very limited in that and that's what just keeps getting missing.
So I guess.
That's practice.
I'm thinking even from, I'm with you, but I'm thinking even from a lesson learned standpoint, even if we get, before we get that far down the road, just at the very beginning, if we're walking that path, okay, be aware, this will be the norms you will have to operate under. That's what I see.
And, and I agree, it sounds, again, one theory of the problem is that once the representation got in place, that's the unions, that's their, their peaks and so they're going to speak on their behalf. It would be no different than two people being represented by attorneys and one of the attorneys goes directly to the line back.
Well, what would have been different if we would have had a consistent, clear explanation?
I think that's right. We could have made sure that both parties knew sort of the relevance.
Yeah, make sure, no, make sure what we said.
Well, I think there's a theory of what he could say, but I also think it would be clear, it would help the entire process because right now, um, I have certainly heard material implications affect in how the board is being represented and yet we cannot say anything about that.
Right, that's right, you're right.
There are actual materially miscapaces that have been made, there are factual inaccuracies. Not today, just in general. And so I think it is being represented.
Okay. Okay, can we move on? So, just a couple of things, Dr. McLeary, can you give us an update on a couple of the transition items?
Sure. I've been spending the last few weeks talking with a large number of the teachers and administrators and getting to know people and so forth and I think that's been one of the problems as well, getting to know people in their backgrounds. Two of the key things that I was slated to do during this time is to work on the principal search. I know the school, some people brought up tonight, it's been about a principal for quite a while. So I think that's, there's good progress there, contributing to other people who are working on that and I think, I'm hoping that there'll be something to say of the committee for the summer. My goal is to have somebody in place to start the school year because I know that it's something important for the life of the school and we can't keep going without somebody to work in that administrative position. I've had good, good success in the past in a number of different schools and high-powered principals and one, some of the things I've been looking for are an understanding of the specific characteristics and benefits that accrue to having a charter school. This particular charter school, its charter and so forth, it really represents some of its key characteristics, what they call the key design elements of the charter. So those are the kinds of things that I've been, been looking at. The accountability plan is another issue that I'm working on. I've been working with the director of accountability for the school, this is Snow, and we've made good progress there. We've been in contact with the Department of Education and that was the department chairs one day and got some of their feedback that they have been working on to write about. Looked at the past accountability plan and we have something now with the department. We've had a communication back then and now we're waiting to communicate back. So it looks like we're going to wrap that up shortly. We're going to have something to present at the board for a week. But my hope is that we'll be able to continue the, the progress that the schools made these past 10 years. You know, I think I've said a couple of times before, I'm not, I'm not keen on just sort of, you know, throwing everything out and, and I, I was attracted to the school by the charter. I've said, I've said that to every audience that I've talked to. So my goal would be to continue to maintain all those good elements that are in the original charter and grow and continue to develop and I think that's where the accountability plan plays a important role because it's based on key design elements that come out of the charter. So I think there's very good progress over there.
All right.
Actually, one other thing is with the organizational charter leadership structure, we've got a, one of our, our charter.
Yes, we have the organizational chart. I've talked with various people who would have some change in their duties that would come from that. There aren't, there aren't many significant changes. In some cases, people would report to me that may have reported to somebody else in the past. For example, the registrars, the person, in my experience, as long as it worked, he has played such a key role in the law and in a lot of them, of things that are specifically charters and so forth. But in most cases, the organizational chart remains as it was. I think, I think the key thing that the Department of Education has communicated is that they were concerned because of sort of gaps in the administrative structure that they were in existence before and I think they'll be happy to see that this traditional structure where you have the board of trustees, you have the ED, you have the principal, the directors doing services and so forth, kind of natural flow and under that. So that's all.
So the next on our agenda is third-party survey. Are we ready for that?
Well, there's no date. So the survey is, so we determined for a number of reasons that we do this work to go ahead with faculty survey and hold the parent and student surveys for the fall to allow, or preparation time has allowed the administration to get speed on that. Faculty survey is in the ground, we're on, on the ground. We've got 51% response so far. We're extending the deadline to June 30th. I have not reviewed any of the reports.
I don't know if we're going to get more faculty response. I know the faculty are feeling a little over surveyed at this point. There's a lot at the end of the year that sort of came out and that happened to come at the time when people are like, are they asking us again to this? Like, so that was.
Yeah, it's going to be what it's going to be. So we'll give it a few more days and we'll, and we're, we're got.
Can I just ask in terms of, you mentioned there being a sense of over surveyed, is there a, I'm going to call it better time, obviously this year, but a better time in general, when we should be surveyed to get the maximum benefit from it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, would this one go out June, it's June, June. So I'd probably be in May then.
And historically, is that when it particularly goes out?
Historically, it's at the end.
October or anything?
Yeah, like October and then May. It's never really been October, it's been more November, but traditionally, that's what it's been. Originally, it was annually every May and then we added in that mid-year, which I don't know that we need and I think you can, you can talk to Panera and see what that practices are because you might be creating too many, you know, surveys and the end of the year might be enough of a baseline.
And then, Chris, you brought up a point that's on the agenda here, discussion of an agenda creation, moving to more strategic content. I think we could hold this for a few minutes, but what we found in board meetings didn't go wrong and, and we have lots of content on it and sometimes the more important things don't get done. So this was sort of a place for us a little bit of discussion of are there better practices out there that would allow us to inject more, you know, really important strategic content into board meetings versus some of the stuff that we sort of have to do.
And I think, so my take on that is we should pick up where we left off in January. We estimated how much funding we should be spending on that. Or we started to build our agenda that way and then start from that stuff and be very aware of trying to, you know, have that conversation first and then that would give us an incentive to tend early to get to the other stuff happening. And I think it does, I think the point now, you know, we've, we've been back and forth about being objective, being a planner, but I think we're reaching a point where we're really kind of stalled until we do, and I'm not even sure what we're calling it, is a combination of the key elements that we've been talking about that are going to be what we're thinking essentially, answer, should be what drives us going forward in all of our committees, not particularly where we're fundraising and developing and why I'm still in the discussion, strategic fundraising discussion, because without that, there wouldn't be a problem. Why do we want to raise money? Well, it's to accomplish this vision that we need to.
And so how would we shift, you know, if you've got the typical content on the board and then how would we shift some of that off, maybe do it by monthly or from more down in committees? I'm not sure how we sort of make time.
I think that might be a matter for governance and it might be a matter for board on that. I think there's, I think we spend a lot of time here just from the one bullhunnus subject that we spend time discussing things that we shouldn't be discussing. There are two reasons, two details.
Can you think of an example that would sort of prep us for that thought?
Well, so I think another way of putting that is that, you know, once you have the ED on board and the principal on board, once you work through, you know, some of these other issues that are on the plate, you know, that are vying for our attention, then, you know, then you can start to look for, you know, more strategic things.
No suggestion you don't try to do it now.
Well, we've got a new year ahead of us, a new school year, so I think we should try to keep in mind that.
We did, we did on governance committee stack for the year to, we'll get through the dynamics somewhat once we've really made it play. Don't fill that report.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a super rather.
Yeah.
It's a very important conversation to hear.
Do we have a question?
So we're focused on, for 11 months for the school year, we're going to focus on our wage threshold at the end of the school year on the 30th. What we're going to focus on tuition at this point in time, we're projecting income at 12.1 million and tuition represents about 92% of our total income, that's about 1% more than what we had planned for, is what we're looking to come in on with. On grants and donations, this is two pieces to this, these are title grants, government and this is also fundraising that we do and fundraising update coming up here, that's coming in. Both of those are done in substantial below what we hit, but. Misleading is income, it's a minimum amount there to project a investment of about $30,000 versus $25,000. The next four line item, we can we talk about attrition income, student programs, the athletic programs, the transportation, have corresponding expense down the line. So bottom line is we're coming in just slightly short of what we had budgeted on account. So if you look here, projecting our total income would be 13.2 million against a budget of 13.3 million. Tuition income's coming in higher, the grants are coming in lower and everything else is pretty much coming in lower. On the expense side of the house, close to 65% of the expenses come through salary and, you know, basically payroll taxes and the like. Nails are coming in, salaries coming in lower, considerably lower because we have a direct position we had like for principal and professional in there are the principal reason why the salary number is projected to come in at 97% of the budget, about $200,000. Instructional supplies, there's also a favorable variance in instructional supplies of almost nine, over 90,000 of what we're getting on this year, that really is much closer monitoring. This is a one-time pickup, right? So we've targeted for these battery controls on a go-forward basis and we won't see a similar variance next year as looking at expectations for this, maybe better use of what we already have and not order it as needed. So. Lease is the next, you know, largest line item after salary, so we're looking at the facilities that are out there. That's coming right in line with what we budgeted and so no surprises there, $160,000 for that, I think, to have in there. And then I drop down to legal. So legal is where we also picked up a favorable variance of almost $100,000 at this point in time. Again, this represents, good news is $100,000 of variance, the bad news is that our real situation, the result is not what we expected it to at this point. So that's expensive, potentially occurring down the road is basically what's happening. So less legal expenses this year, less we receive favorable answers to cover judgment of just the morrow with these.
Does that take into account the reimbursement through insurance as well?
That is a new account to reimburse, to ensure, continue to be reimbursed with insurance, yes. Bottom line on that, again, if you look at the legal fees and salary number, that's 300,000 of the 400,000 available variance on the expense side of the house. That leads us to a projected net income of 450,000 as opposed to the 97,000 that we were definitely starting the year. At our next July meeting, we should have preliminary year-on numbers. So these are 11 months of actual plus one month protection in here. We should have at the July meeting 12 months of actuals. The auditors were onsite this week or last week?
This week.
This week, they're onsite this week, they're on the meeting. People are aware, as a charter school, we have to undergo independent third-party audit, abbreviated, that's the file of the state, there to be an exercise, a regular planning exercise at this point in time. They will get their audit and they'll report out to us if you have to report it, they're going to file out with the state. That's the topic of the update. Now, if you have any further questions.
Questions? Thank you, sir. To evidence, I will turn it over to.
This is our annual meeting and so during this meeting is when we review any changes to the bylaws that we want to commit to these for consideration and also when we do committee chair, officer transitions and appoint trustees to various committees. So that's what usually family like. The bylaws, we had previously discussed last July, the last one was really, July, last July. We did not, well, we tried to submit them to these at the time and because there had been new charter regulations, these was not actually accepting by law changes and then because we had our charter application in process, it's also something that they did not want to look at until March or so, at this point, we had identified two areas where we wanted to make additional changes. So the two areas that we're proposing to change, actually it's really one, can we start with bylaws? Yeah, well, two five is a clarification. So two five, and we should discuss this, Jeff's been able to see this beforehand, I think they need to get great clarity. There has never been a clear specification of who votes for the faculty rep. It's just that, the bylaws just say that the faculty rep is elected, voted on by the faculty body and there is no definition of the faculty body. And so what we wanted to try to do, because as we understand it, it has changed our rules and it does cause confusion each year, is to define the general faculty body and this is codifying the past practice of the last two years, which would mean that the faculty rep is voted on by teachers, department chairs, guidance counselors, special education instructors and any other amputee staff who, whose primary role is involved with meeting students' academic needs. So that's what we're proposing as a clarification.
So the only change is who gets to vote for the faculty rep? This is the only issue that this is addressing?
Right, it's a clarification.
It's defined.
It's defining.
Right, so it's only who is eligible to vote.
For the faculty rep.
Right, that red faculty thing, red thing.
It's confined to that one action.
If you go back up to here, I think the baby answer to that question, faculty representative, monkey's blood, faculty audit.
Yeah, that's what it always said and it's just not clear what that means.
And so what is in red? It's represented.
The red, it means new.
So what is in red is not, is a representation of what is current practice or what has been done.
What has been done to the package.
And Miss Owen, is this, I feel like the article is good with this definition.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might want to clarify special education instructors, whether or not that includes paraprofessionals. I would say that they, that they do have, their primary role is directly involved with students' academic needs, but sort of, you know, there are special ed teachers and there are paraprofessionals, so.
So that was the purpose of that final clause there because, you know, if we're a charter school, it's, there are, that's, that's the purpose of that last clause, to say any other, and other amputee staff's primary role is directly involved with students' academic needs, is the purpose of that clause to embrace.
Are you aware that they have voted in the past?
I'm, I don't, I don't know if they were able to vote in the past. Um, yeah, department chairs, guidance counselors.
Teacher, department chair, guidance counselor.
Yeah, it has been, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with saying that there is a consistent past practice.
Yeah, I think that's part of, trying to address, say, we've noticed.
No, I think we're trying to codify. Right, right, so, and I, I think that one of the things that came up a year or two ago was that by this phrase here, in numerous cases, the executive director can determine, there was a situation where the executive director made decisions about he could or couldn't vote and it seemed to be decided in a way that was meant to shape the outcome of the vote.
That's a new suggestion that we have to add.
Is there, is there another way that the faculty might feel more comfortable with sort of making tiebreaker decisions? There'll be a new position that comes up, not one of these.
Right, exactly.
Computer liaison is tough, it's not a secure network.
Yeah.
I will put my new power up.
I, I don't know that there's a better answer than the executive director, I just know that.
The other alternative I had in there, I'll just throw it out there, I had voted both of them at one point in time, the other choice I had written in there was the principal to be another choice, but I thought, yeah, I thought it made more sense if the executive director has oversight of the whole organization, they would be able to arbitrate and decide whether the, the other liaisons that were not teachers, who are not guidance counselors, not department chairs, not special education instructors, that the executive director could make a valid determination on that.
Yeah, I, I don't have a better suggestion.
So by this definition, the faculty rep is basically representing all of these, all the five, mentioned five, so there's a big academic, big, big, all these.
Including department chairs.
Okay, I mean, I think that's why I just want to make sure of that.
So when the, when you mentioned that in the past, there were people who said that you voted or not voted, people who were not allowed to vote in the past, who they had been a teacher or department chair.
Oh, I know what we need to clarify.
Is the same employee, I, I think it should be, I mean.
I know what happened, one year they said that people who had decided they were not coming back for next year could not vote, that's what it was.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, you did.
There's no, in the bylaws, there's no, well, actually, yeah, or maybe the bylaws, if I read in this bylaws would be anybody who is currently an employee at the school.
It needs to be covered employees, so.
And that's, that's implicit.
My question, is there a date before this happened? Just a month ago, yeah.
Typically done in the, in the, in the, in the primary.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
But that's a faculty, it's a, it's a, whether they're from the back or not.
Right. Would that help if it specifically says current?
I think you have a.
Yeah. I, I will put the word where I find it. Teacher, the word. Currently employed. Can you just add the word, I don't know, in front of faculty body in the sentence above that?
I'll add one, shall be defined. Is that good now?
No, yeah.
I don't know where you're coming from.
Sorry, can we just click up one?
What's that, one?
And go to the, to the left.
Which is faculty, no, the other way, the faculty body.
Yeah, the general faculty body.
Oh, and the general. That's a new.
Yeah, so that was consistent with the.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. Thank, thank you, Brian.
So is that good then? Everybody's good with that, that change? Do you want to go ahead and explain the second one, because I'll make a point.
Yes, the second change is a new change and we are proposing that we adopt remote participation for board meetings and committee meetings. And this is the wording that is proposed, which is, says that you're going to, we're allowed to do this, we have adopted it in our bylaws and it is straight out as the regulations.
Straight out of the law.
Straight out of the law. This is what regulations are basically. The minimum requirements are that all members have to be clearly audible to each other and that there needs to be a quorum physically present, including whoever's chairing the meeting. And then people are allowed to participate remotely.
Okay, can we move on? So just a couple of things, Dr. McLeary, can you give us an update on a couple of the transition items?
Sure. I've been, I've been spending the last few weeks talking with a large number of the teachers and administrators and getting to know people and so forth and I think that's been one of the problems as well, getting to know people in their backgrounds and so forth. Two of the key things that I was slated to do during this time is to work on the principal search. I know the school, some people brought up tonight, it's been about a principal for quite a while. So I think that's, there's good progress there, contributing to other people who are working on that and I think, I'm hoping that there'll be something to say of the committee for the summer. My goal is to have somebody in place to start the school year because I know that it's something important for the life of the school and we can't keep going without somebody to work in that administrative position. I've had good, good success in the past in a number of different schools and high-powered principals and one, some of the things I've been looking for are an understanding of the specific characteristics and benefits that accrue to having a charter school. This particular charter school, its charter and so forth, it really represents some of its key characteristics, what they call the key design elements of the charter. So those are the kinds of things that I've been, been looking at. The accountability plan is another issue that I'm working on. I've been working with the director of accountability for the school, this is Snow, and we've made good progress there. We've been in contact with the Department of Education and that was the department chairs one day and got some of their feedback that they have been working on to write about. Looked at the past accountability plan and we have something now with the department. We've had a communication back then and now we're waiting to communicate back. So it looks like we're going to wrap that up shortly. We're going to have something to present at the board for a week. But my hope is that we'll be able to continue the, the progress that the schools made these past 10 years. You know, I think I've said a couple of times before, I'm not, I'm not keen on just sort of, you know, throwing everything out and, and I, I was attracted to the school by the charter. I've said, I've said that to every audience that I've talked to. So my goal would be to continue to maintain all those good elements that are in the original charter and grow and continue to develop and I think that's. charter, and grow and continue to develop, and I think that's where the accountability plan does a important role, because it's based on the key design elements that come out of the charter, so I, I think we've made a good progress over there.
All right.
Actually, can you bring up one other thing, just with the organizational charter leadership structure, because that is a, um, one of our questions, or a charter, I would like to talk to you about that.
Yes, we have the organizational charter, uh, I've talked with various people who would have some change in their duties that would come from that, there aren't, there aren't many significant changes, in some cases, people would report to me that may have reported to somebody else in the past, uh, for example, the registrars, the person in my experience is always important to me, it plays such a key role in the law, and a lot of them, all the things that are specific to charters and so forth, but in most cases, uh, the organization charter, uh, remains as it was. I think, I think the key thing that the Department of Education has communicated is that they were concerned because of, uh, sort of gaps in, uh, in the administrative structure that had existed before, and I think they'll be happy to see that there's a traditional structure, where you have the board trustees, you have the ED, and the principal, and the director of student services, it's all kind of naturally flowing under that, uh, so that's all, that's ready to be discussed.
So the next on our agenda is third party survey, is it, are you ready for that?
Yeah, so I love there's an update, so the survey is, um, so we determined for a number of reasons that we do this work to go ahead with faculty survey, and it will hold the parent and student surveys to the fall to allow, or preparation time has allowed the administration to get to speak on that. Faculty survey is in the ground, we're on the, on the ground, we've got fifty-one percent response so far, uh, we're extending the deadline to June thirty, uh, I have not reviewed any of the reports.
I don't know if we're going to get more faculty response, I know the faculty are feeling a little over surveyed at this point, there's a lot at the end of the year that sort of came out, and what happened to come at the time, when people are like, are they asking us again to do this, like, so, um, that was...
Yeah, it's going to be what it's going to be, now, so we'll get a few more days and then we'll, and we'll work on that.
Can I just ask, in terms of, you mentioned there being over, a sense of over survey, is, is there a, um, quote unquote, better time, not obviously this year, but a better time in general, when we should be surveying to get the maximum benefit from it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, would this one go out, it was June, yeah, so I, I'd be calling at the end of May, you go.
And historically, is that when it particularly goes down?
Historically, we try to do it at the end.
October and May.
Yeah, and October and May, it's never really been October, it's been more November, but, um, traditionally that's what it's been, originally it was annually every May, and then we added in, um, that mid-year, which I don't know that we need, and I think you can, you can talk to Panarima and see what that practices are, um, because you might be creating, um, too many, you know, surveys at the end of the year, might be an, a baseline group.
And then, Chris, you brought up a point that's on the agenda here, discussion of an agenda creation, moving forward towards teaching content, I think we can hold this for a few minutes, but, um, what we found in board meetings can go wrong, and, and we have lots of content on, um, and sometimes, some of the more important things don't get done. So this was sort of a placeholder, and a little bit of discussion of are there better practices out there that would allow us to inject more, you know, really important strategic content in board meetings versus some of the stuff that we sort of have to do.
And I think, so my take on that is that we should pick up where we left off in January, and, uh, we estimated how much funding we should be spending on that, or if we started to build our agenda that way, and then start from that stuff, and be very aware of trying to, you know, have that conversation first, and then that would give us an incentive to tend early to get to the other stuff. And I think it does, I think it would point out, you know, we've, we've been back and forth about the strategic, the plan of what, I think we're reaching a point where we're really kind of stalled, uh, until we do, and I'm not even sure what we're calling, is a combination of the key elements that we've been talking about?
Yes.
That are going to be, that we're seeking essence of amnesty, should be what drives us going forward in all of our committees, I'm particularly aware of fundraising and development, and why a strategic fundraising discussion, because without that, it would leave us nothing, and why do we want to raise money? Well, it's to accomplish this vision that we need to...
And so how would we shift, you know, if you've got the typical content on the board meeting, how would we shift some of that off, maybe do it by monthly or a more down in committees, I'm not sure how we sort of make time for this.
I think that might be a matter for governance, and it might be a matter for board on the back, uh, I think there's, I think we spend a lot of time here, just from the one whole kind of subject, that we spend time discussing things that we shouldn't be discussing, if there are two ways, it's too detailed.
Can you think of an example that would sort of prep us for that talk?
Well, so I think another way of putting that is that, you know, once you have the ED on board, and the principal on board, once we work through, um, you know, some of these other issues that are on a plate, you know, that are vying for our attention, then, you know, then you can start to look, you know, at more strategic, that's not a suggestion you don't try to do, yeah.
Yeah, things like that, yeah.
Well, we've got a new year ahead of us, a new school year, so I guess we can try to keep in mind that.
Can you, can you, on governance creating staffs for the year to, will they be buying up in somewhat once they've really made a place, so tell that report.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a, a, rather.
Yeah.
A very important conversation to have here, I think.
All right, Lauren, do you have a priori survey update?
Okay. So we're focused on, we're loving much for your school year, we're going to focus out, we'll reach bachelor level at the end of school year, uh, on the 30th, we're going to focus on tuition, this is a bonus, we're projecting funding of twelve point one million, and tuition represents about ninety-two percent of our total income, it's about one percent more than what we had funded before, that's what we're looking to come in on, uh, with. On grants, they'll make, this is two pieces to this, this is a title of grants, that is a key government, and this is also fundraising, we're doing fundraising update coming up here, that's coming in, both of those are coming in substantially below what we had budgeted for. Miscellaneous income is a minimum amount there, so projecting the best to about thirty thousand versus twenty-five thousand. The next four line items, we've been, we've talked about attrition income, the student programs, the athletic programs, the transportation, have a corresponding expense out of the line. So the bottom line is, um, we're coming in just slightly short of loving a budgeted account, so if you look here, projecting our total income would be thirteen point two million against a budget of thirteen point three million, um, the tuition income's coming higher, uh, the grants are coming in lower, and everything else is pretty much coming in low. On the expense side of the house, close to sixty-five percent of the expenses come through salary and, you know, for basically payable taxes and the like, uh, bills are coming in, salaries coming lower, considerably lower, we have a key electric position we had funded for principal, and forget about the professional in there, are the principal reasons why the salary number is projected to come in at ninety-seven percent of our budget, about two hundred and fifty dollars. Instructional supplies, there's also a favorable variance in instructional supplies of almost nine, over ninety thousand, that we're projecting on this year, that's really is much closer monitoring, um, this is a one-time pickup, right, so we budgeted for these better controls on a go-forward basis, uh, and we won't see a similar variance next year as we're getting expectations, that this would make a better use of what we already have and not order it, we didn't, we just, we'll, so, yeah. Lease is the next, you know, largest line item after salary, so, again, the facilities that are out there, that's coming in right at a line, well, we budgeted, uh, and so no surprises there, I don't want to say too much, but I think that happens. And then I will drop down to legal, so legal is where we also picked up a favorable variance of almost a hundred thousand dollars at this point in time, again, this represents, good news is a hundred thousand dollar pay for variance, the bad news is that our situation to not get results is not what we expected it to at this point, so that is expensive, we could potentially be occurring down the road, it's basically what's happening, so less legal expenses this year, and less we receive payable expenses, we're just, more legal fees, yeah.
Does that take into account the reimbursement through insurance as well?
That takes into account reimbursement through insurance, it continues to be reimbursed through insurance, yes. Bottom line on that, again, if you look at the legal fees and the salary number, that's three hundred thousand of the four hundred thousand payable variance on the expense side of the house, that leads us to a projected net income of four hundred and fifty thousand as opposed to ninety-seven thousand, we would have definitely started the year. At our next July meeting, we should have preliminary year-end numbers, so these are eleven months of actual plus one month protection, we should have at the July meeting, twelve months of actual, so the collateral we're looking at. The auditors were onsite, this week or last week?
This week.
This week, they're onsite this week, they're on this meeting, uh, people are aware, as a charter school, we have to undergo an independent third-party audit, abbreviated as that's compiled to state, and they'll begin an exercise, they're planning an exercise at this point in time, they will conduct their audit, and then they'll report out to us at the end of the board meeting, and then they'll file out with the state. That's the final kind of update, that'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
To evidence, I will turn it over to...
This is our annual meeting, and so during this meeting is when we review any changes to the bylaws that we want to commit to these for consideration, and also when we do committee chair officer transitions and appoint trustees to marry the committee, so that's what usually the annual meeting, I think, is going to be. The bylaws, we had previously discussed last July, the last one was, July, not in July, um, we did not, well, we tried to submit some to these at the time, and because there had been new charter regulations, these were not actually accepting by laws changes, and then because we had our charter application in process, it's also something that they didn't want to look at until March or so, um, at this point, we had identified two areas where we wanted to make additional changes. So the two areas that we're proposing to change, actually, it's really one, can we start with bylaws? Yeah, well, two, five is a clarification, so two, five, and we should discuss this, um, Jeff's been able to see this beforehand, and I think we need to get great clarity, there has never been a clear specification of who votes for the faculty rep. It's just that, the bylaws just say that the faculty rep is selected solely by the faculty body, and there is no definition of the faculty body, and so what we wanted to try to do, because, as we understand it, it has changed the rules on it, it does constitute each year, is to define the general faculty body, and this is codifying the past practice of the last two years, which would mean that the faculty rep is voted on by teachers, department chairs, guidance counselors, special education instructors, and any other amputate staff who, whose primary role is involved with meeting students academic needs, so that's what we're proposing as the clarification.
So the only change is who gets to vote for the faculty rep? This is the only issue that this is addressing?
Right, it's, it's a clar, it's a defining...
It's actually not change, it's clarification.
Right, so it's only who is eligible to vote?
For their faculty rep.
Right, that red, faculty, red, thing.
It's confined to that one action.
If we go back up to here, I think the baby answer to that question, faculty representative, monkey's collecting, faculty body, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it always said, and it's just not clear what that means.
And so what is in red? It's representing...
The red, meaning new.
Bylaws, so what is in red is not, is a representation of what is current practice? Or what has been done in the past?
What has been done for the faculty.
Okay.
And Ms. Bowen, is this, do you like the faculty's good with this definition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I, you might want to clarify special education instructors, whether or not that includes paraprofessionals, um, I would say that they, that they do have, their primary role is directly involved in students academic needs, but sort of, um, you know, there are special ed teachers and there are paraprofessionals, so.
So that was the purpose of that final clause there, because, you know, if we're a charter school, it's, there are, that's, that's the purpose of that last clause, to say any other, and other head staffs, primary role is directly involved in students academic needs, is the purpose of that clause to embrace...
Are you aware that they had voted in the past?
Um, I'm, I don't, I don't know if they were able to vote in the past. Um, yeah, department chair, time councilor.
Teacher, department chair, time councilor.
Yeah, it has been, um, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with saying that there is a consistent past practice, okay.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we're trying to address, to say we've noticed that they still...
No, I think we're trying to codify them.
Right, right, so, um, and I, I think that one of the things that came up a year or two ago was that by this phrase here, in numerous cases, the executive director can determine, um, there was a situation where the executive director made decisions about he could or couldn't vote, and it seemed to be decided in a way that was meant to shape the outcome of the vote.
That's a new suggestion that's to be added.
Is there, is there another way that the faculty might feel more comfortable with sort of making tiebreaker decisions? There'll be a new position that comes up, not one of these.
Right, exactly.
Computer liaison, it's custom, it's not a secure the network, it's doing all the time.
I will put my new power down.
I, I don't know that there's a better answer than the executive director, I just know that.
I, the other alternative I had in there, I'll just throw it out there, I had voted both of them at one point in time, the other choice I had written in there was the principal to be another choice, but I thought, yeah, I thought it made more sense if the executive director has oversight of the whole organization, they would be able to arbitrate and decide whether the, the other liaisons that were not teachers, who are not guidance councilors, not department chairs, not special education instructors, that the executive director could make a valid determination on that.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, a better suggestion.
Ms.?
So, um, by this definition, the faculty rep is basically representing all of these, all the five, mentioned bodies, so there's a new faculty, faculty body.
Including department chairs?
Okay, I mean, I think that's why I just want to make sure of that.
So when the, when you mentioned that in the past, there were people who said that you voted or not voted, people who were not allowed to vote in the past, who they had been a teacher or a department chair?
Oh, I know what we need to clarify.
Is the same employee, I, I think it should be, I mean, is it...
I know what happened, one year they said that people who had decided they were not coming back for next year could not vote, that's what it was.
Yeah, I remember that. About that, I just...
Yeah, you did.
There's no, in the bylaws or no, well, actually, yeah, or maybe the bylaws, if I read in this bylaws, it would be anybody who is currently an employee at the school...
Yeah, covered, it needs to be covered employees, so.
And that's, that's implicit, but my question, is there a date before what was happening?
Just a month ago, yeah.
It's typically done in the, in the... It's typically done in the, in the, in the code day tiebreaker.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
But that's the faculty who would take it.
It's certainly, whether they're coming back or not.
Right.
Right.
Would that help if it specifically says current?
Do you have a contact? I think you're right. You're just a person.
Yeah.
I can put the word current. Teacher board.
Targeted employees. Can you just add the word general in front of faculty body in the sentence above that?
Try it down, it was, I'm sorry. Any more, think of it down.
I'll add one. Shall be defined. Right, that's it. Is that good now?
No, yeah, I don't know where you're coming from.
Sorry, can we just pick up one?
What's happened? One more.
And go to the, to the last one.
Which is faculty, no, the other one, the faculty body.
The general faculty body.
Oh, and the general faculty. So that's a new. That one.
Yeah, so that was consistent with the.
Yeah, the generalized, that would be not intended.
All right.
Thanks, Tom. Thank, thank you for that.
So is that good, Dan? Everybody's good with that change? Do you want to go ahead and explain the second one? I'll take the first one.
Yeah. The second change is a new change. And we are proposing that we adopt remote participation for board meetings and committee meetings. And this is the wording that is proposed, which is said that you're going to do. We're allowed to do this. We have to adopt it in our bylaws. And it is just straight out of the regulations.
Straight out of basketball.
Straight out of the general law. This is what the regulations are basically. So the minimum requirements are that all members have to be clearly audible to each other and that there needs to be a quorum physically present, including whoever's chairing the meeting. And then people are allowed to participate remotely.